This is Mayor of the Gadsden City Council and I come to ordering the chair calls on the city clerk, Ivan Nelson, for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Yeah.
Councilman Williams is absent today. Councilman Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present. The meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to come forward and lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we're thankful for another opportunity to come and serve. We ask that our minds be focused on the will of the people. We ask that the decisions be made in a way that is pleasing in your sight. We ask that we work together on one accord for the betterment of the community, the state, hereby the nation. We will be ever grateful and honored to give you the praise and the glory in the name of your son Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Community Development Committee to Work Stations and Council Meeting on February 28th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, I entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of February 24th through March 1st.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
This is in the proclamation.
He does have one. He stepped out and said, "I'll be right back." He does have one.
Okay. Number eight is unfinished business. We'll come back to him when he gets back. Resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1419 Jackson Avenue in District Five owned by Jack D. Flay, Sr., and wife Marjorie N. Flay. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on January 31st. What's the pleasure of the council?
On a recommendation to the building department, I'd like to ask for a 30-day table on this, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I can only keep up with about nine things at once. I can't...
You have the glasses. You want my...
Boy, I'm glad I had them. I'd like to get Laura Elliott with the Girl Scouts of North Alabama to come up, please. Hey, how are you?
Nice to meet you. Thank you. This is a 1914 uniform.
Okay. Whereas on March 12th, 1912, Juliette Gordon Low gathered 18 girls in Savannah, Georgia, and launched the Girl Scouts of USA by registering the first troop of American Girl Guides. The name of the organization was changed to Girl Scouts. The following year, on June 10th, 1915, the organization was incorporated as Girl Scouts Inc. The first Girl Scout troop registered in the current jurisdiction of the Girl Scouts of North Central Alabama Council was formed and originated right here in the city of Gadsden in 1917. Girl Scouts has continually provided leadership, experiences that build girls of courage, confidence, and character who make the world a better place for a century. The city of Gadsden recognizes the Girl Scouts as as relevant today as Girl Scouts it was in 1912, allowing girls the opportunity to learn skills for career building, earn relevant badges, awards, and recognitions, make the world a better place through environmental initiatives, and develop decision-making and leadership skills necessary to become productive citizens. Whereas the city of Gadsden recognizes that Girl Scouts is the preeminent leadership organization for girls in the world with approximately 2.3 million girl members, 880,000 adult members, and an alumni base of more than 50 million American women. Therefore, I, Mr. Mayor of the city of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim that March 12th, 2012, is the 100th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA Day. Sign this day and seal the 6th day of March, 2012. You want to say a few words?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Girl Scouts of North Central Alabama is the local organization of Girl Scouting in this area, and the Girl Scouts of North Central Alabama appreciates Mayor Guyton, the members of the council, and Ms. Nelson's support in the past and with this proclamation today. I'll be at the Etowah Historical Society on Friday, the 9th. The meeting's at 6:00, and we'll be doing a little program about the history of Girl Scouts in the United States, and would love for everyone to attend.
How about your uniform?
This is from... This is a 1914 replica, obviously. A replica of the 1914 uniform, and originally the uniform was blue in 1912.
Reason being asked that? He was there when you introduced that uniform.
Man didn't quite like that. I think that's sharp.
It is. And we like dosa-dos.
I was just gonna say, I love a lady in uniform, particularly when she bring cupcakes that was as good as they were.
Did y'all get your cookies also?
Yes, we did.
Girl Scout cookie sales underway.
But the cupcakes was...
Thank you.
They do a wonderful job.
I will say too, they're always... They can always use volunteers. I know my wife used to work up at the campground, helping with swimming lessons every year for quite a long time, but you're always looking for good volunteers, so anybody out there that's interested, might contact y'all. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine is a resolution rejecting bid number 3195 for rehabilitation of a structure at 414 Turntown Avenue. This bid was not... will not be necessary because the property owner has taken responsibility for the repaired Chair, I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution approving budget amendment for emergency shelter grant. This adjusts two line items in the amount of $500 relating to the Salvation Army in 13th Place Incorporated. Chair, I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is a resolution authorizing agreement with Pioneer Chicken Stand Band to entertain for smoke on the falls on Saturday, April 14th. Chair, I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thirteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Alabama Department of Transportation. This is for preliminary engineering for the traffic signal system timing project on Megan Boulevard from Springfield Avenue to 29th Street and George Wallace Drive from Megan Boulevard to 759, then to Payton Ridge Avenue. Chair, I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 12 is a resolution authorizing advertising agreement with the Gadsden Times. This is for classified line and display advertising at the $2,500 level at a rate of 2.34 per line, $2.34 per line. Chair, I entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Fourteen is an ordinance adopting 2012-2013 Community Development Block Grant Program Budget in the amount of $1,085,000. The program year runs from June 1st, 2012 through May 31st, 2013. Due to the deadline for submission to HUD, action has been requested today. Chair, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules and consider the ordinance today at its first reading.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Chair, I entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. The reason we're doing this is, of course, to have a 30-day public notice period, and that's gonna put us up against the deadline getting this into Washington. As you know, they've cut us again this year with community development block grant funds. It seems like this is gonna be an ongoing process from Washington. We've been working for the last several years through the National League of Cities to try to show the importance of this block grant program and what it means to cities and towns across the nation, but for whatever reason, that group in Washington seems to think that... I'm not even sure what they think, but I do know that for the first time, I think, we've less than a million dollars that we're getting this year. And I can remember when we were getting almost several million dollars a year in block grant funds, so people need to be aware of the folks they send to Washington. They're talking about they're cutting out the fat, and they're talking about cutting out all whatever, but what they're actually doing is putting the burden back on the municipalities. And of course, we've got to come up with money to redo streets and street improvement. As a matter of fact, I think we've got a little over $100,000 in this budget right here just on street improvement. If that wasn't available through the block grant funds, we would have to pay for it out of our budget. And so people just need to be mindful... I take that back, it's $291,000 for street improvement, and we would have to take that out of our budget, and we'd have to cut someplace else in order to make up that $300,000 difference. So just need to be mindful of that. And hopefully next week, when everybody's in Washington, we will emphasize to our elected officials, our congressmen and senators, the importance of these funds for our community.
These are federal funds that come down, and like all federal funds, there's strings attached to it. This is money that has to be spent in low to moderate income areas in our city, but it's a very important program that we need to hang on to as long as we can.
I think it's one of the most important parts of our budget, really. Absolutely. But you know, Robert and Bill, about two years ago, Washington, we were lobbying so hard, you know, for CDBG and to try to save it and so on and so forth, and going around, it amazed me, not our delegation, but the numbers of those people up there didn't even know what I was talking about.
That's right.
They absolutely did not know.
They didn't have a clue.
No.
They didn't have a clue.
And here they are voting down, you know? You don't want... It upset me, kind of... It put me on the notion of the soapbox, as you call it.
Yeah, you got it.
All right.
Okay. Vote?
Let's take a vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Fifteen is an ordinance ascending to annexation of property at 113 Murray Drive in the city of Gadsden. This annexation was requested by the property owner, Ms. Betty F. Wood, who wishes to establish water service. The ordinance was presented today for the first reading. The council will vote on it next week. New businesses, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning, is authorizing a consent order with ADM regarding the landfill violation.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll ask for approval, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a... You know, they monitor our landfill with a fine-tooth comb, and this was a violation. I understand that we didn't cover up the debris that we put out there on a timely matter that we probably should have. So anyway, this is settle the violation.
Any other?
I understand that the inspector was there, I think, that day when it happened. If I'm not mistaken, yeah.
But they nitpicked they were gonna do.
Yeah, but anyway.
Can I speak to that?
Sure, go ahead.
I know I'm gonna be negative.
That's okay.
But going along with just like the CDBG grant and some of the other things, it's all sort of coming down. I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but when they run out of money, it's gonna pass on down to the counties and the municipalities, the local government, and we're gonna be continually getting this for a while. I don't know how long, but that's exactly what's happening. And you know, it's... Our landfill is not garbage that's shipped out. It's trash, debris, lint, stuff like that, and it's a problem sometimes to have enough dirt to cover it. We can't cover it right after they drop a load out there. It's supposed to be done at each week, but they got where they come out there quite a bit, but it's all rolling downhill, I'm telling you, and it's gonna continue that way. We're just... Some places are already filing bankrupt. You can read in a lot of municipalities around the United States and the counties, they don't have enough money to do things without they raise taxes. We're not raising any taxes, and we're gonna keep doing what we're doing, but we're blessed to be in the situation we are for the work the council's done and our employees, and you know, we wanna try to be financially sound, and we're going to be, but this is just one of those things. The gas, you know, that's another problem out there. I expect it to be $7 by July 4th, myself.
Yeah.
And but we're gonna make it. We're not gonna let it get the best of us, but they don't mind passing rules, laws, ordinances, regulations, or whatever, all the way up the ladder because they don't have to deal with people and the problems on the ground. But anyway, that's how I get off my soapbox.
In other words, you're saying that instead of having a speed trap, we got a garbage trap, we're just trying to raise funds? That's what it sounds like. Okay, all right.
Seems like they're perched right on the edges of the landfill with fire glasses and binoculars, just waiting on somebody to make a small little error.
State gotta raise money some kind of way. Move right along. I don't know. Call for a question.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have one that pertains to the landfill also. It's Legal Department 2012/116. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with SME for the acquired ADM stormwater inspection at our CDC and D landfill and transfer station. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent for this, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Ask for passage, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have several here I'd like to bring up. The first one is the resolution authorizing participation in the summer food service program. I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
No, I ask for passage.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this resolution authorized participation in the summer food service program in 2012 and subsequent years. Heretofore, we've been doing this thing every year, and I understand now that the state is gonna let us just pass this and get it on out the way. The city of Gadsden has been participating in the summer food program since the late '70s when we first brought this program to the city. I can remember going around to the city and to other entities in this community when we tried to get the summer food program here, my wife and I, and the city official at that time said we didn't have any hungry children. I'm not sure where he was living or where he was, but we finally got Gadsden State Community College to come on board, and now, of course, the city of Gadsden handles the program, and I'm just thankful that we're still doing that program. It's very vital because a number of our children during the summer months who receive free and reduced meals during the school time don't have an opportunity during the summer to continue those nutritional meals, and that's what this program is all about. I'm just glad to see the city still participating in it after all of those years.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Mr. President, I have two, some good news now, some good economic news. I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to... For the next two resolutions, they're authorizing tax abatement, so I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider those.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider both resolutions today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay. The first resolution is authorizing tax abatement agreement with Southern Coal Storage of Alabama for a major addition, so I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, you wanna do it now or you want to discuss it?
Go ahead. We're proud that Southern Coal Storage built this facility in 2009 in conjunction with a new Keystone Foods out around the airport, and it's located at the junction of Steel Station Road and Airport Road, the old Cameron Station site. It provides coal storage and processing for finished and mid-production frozen food products. Current employment is approximately 20 people, and this major expansion of a little over $5 million will have five new employees. The reason for the major expansion, they have an increase... They will have an increased capacity for finished goods in assisting Keystone in its production. And James Robinson, Mr. Robinson, you here?
Yes, sir.
Would you stand... Would you like to say anything, please? He's the general manager out there. We're certainly glad to have you out there, I assure you.
Thank you very much for your time to consider this resolution. We're happy to be here. We've been brought to Gadsden and here with its home now. We have great workforce, and we want to keep doing business here and keep expanding. We appreciate your...
Now, we appreciate you, yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you.
Why don't you come up here and so that the public will know what y'all are doing out there?
Yeah.
Okay. What we're doing, we initially built the freezer for Keystone, and it was designed to be built in two stages. It's the most economic... Best decision economically for both Keystone and Southern Coal Storage. So now that we've been up and running for almost three years now, we're ready to take that next step. Keystone has been having to overflow some volume to other coal storages, and now that we've proven that their volume is consistent enough to warrant the addition, then we will go ahead and take that step forward.
All right. Would you give a name to the city clerk?
James Robinson.
James Robinson, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, James.
Yes, sir.
I might add that this construction project will involve capital investment of over $5 million that they're doing out there, so that's a great boost to our economy here in Gadsden.
Absolutely. Confident. Vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Along those same vein, we've got another tax abatement here that... This is authorizing tax abatement agreement with Gadsden Fabrication for a major addition too. Mayor, you want to talk about that one?
Yes, sir. Gadsden Fabrication, Inc. was incorporated in 1999. Excuse me. It's located in the Gadsden Industrial Complex. They manufacture environmental pollution equipment, landfill compaction equipment, and they're constantly looking for avenues in which to expand. Currently, they have 50 employees, and this major expansion will be $550,000 and will add about 10 new employees.
$550,000.
Yeah. It was, man.
I want to get some folks, man.
We'll be passing out refreshments.
I'm gonna get that man out of his feet.
Anyway, the reason for this is their growth and expansion into new markets, which is always a positive sign. Larry and Paul Moon are brothers, are the co-owners. Mr. Moon, you here? You want to stand up? Both of you guys that would like to talk or say anything, if you come up, we'll be sure to... You don't want to talk? I don't blame you.
That's a working...
This kid, I might ask him for that $550 million.
But we're certainly glad to see that, and we appreciate working with you, and we're glad to have you here, absolutely. You know, and it's some positive things that's going on when a lot of places doesn't have anything to talk about, so thank you very much.
There you go.
Mayor, I would like to add that I seen him sitting back there a while ago, and while he was gone last week, Councilman Avery was talking about lint heads, and those guys are lint heads from Alabama City.
I thought that.
I know y'all proud to be there.
I told you all the lint heads are taking over.
They are. It's a good thing. Appreciate y'all.
Call for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have one more. This is amend and physical your budget 2012 to deal with the new police chief salary, so I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for passage.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. What we have here, as you know, we did not put money in the budget for the chief of police position in this last budget, so what we're asking the council... What the council is doing now is putting in a salary, plugging in a salary for the new chief, and let me just give you... The sum is $49,421 is appropriated, and it goes as follows: $33,000 for full-time salary, $490 Social Security, state retirement. In other words, this is salaries and benefits for the remainder of this year, what we're putting into the budget, and it equates to about $54,000 a year the chief started out back September 1st. But what you gotta also add into that is salaries and benefits, and that runs it up to about $80-some thousand a year, $81,000, $82,000, $83,000 a year if we did salaries and benefits. There were some people who said that we were being whatever when it comes down to this position. I think there was some talk here, and some council members wanted it lower, some council members wanted it higher, and of course, this is a compromise that we had reached. But let me just give you some history. The last police chief started out at $54,500 a year when he came on board, so this chief here's salary is equivalent on start out, so it's nothing different than what we've done in the past, so I want people to understand that because I know there's gonna be some talk out there, but just wanted to give you a little history on that.
Need a vote?
No more comments?
No more comment?
Yeah, I would. I'd just like to say that I wanted him to start off at range two, was $49,171, but we all made the compromise on that, and so we'll put... The mayor will be the one that puts it in the budget next year, but that was my compromise. That was step two, and everybody else, we all kind of, I guess, met in the middle. I guess that's what you'd probably say.
Yeah, I think so. Like I said, the total salary would be $54,900 if it was over, you know, the year, and we started the other chief off at $54,500, so again...
One of them was... Had been a chief.
Yeah, one of them had been a chief, yeah, but of course, again, I think with Councilman Cannon's 40-something, and I think Councilman Reed was at 60, was it?
Yeah, I was gonna comment, since the low man commented.
Okay.
You were the high man? Well, yeah. Yeah, it was. I went all the way up to 60.
I know you did.
But based on qualifications and the years of experience in law enforcement is the reason I based my opinion on that.
Right.
You know?
I understand.
And I'm happy where we are.
Okay.
I'm happy to learn it, and the mayor, like Johnny says, will come up in the budget next year, and we'll set the salary and go for mayor.
We'll move from there.
We'll look at this again in October when we look at next year's budget and see where we are.
Any other discussion?
Call for the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution that I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today, authorizing library tuition education grant.
Second.
Eric, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is, this is a grant that the Alabama Public Library Service makes available for those persons who are working to obtain a master's degree in library science. And the one condition is that they have to, they have to work 24 months within a three-year period after they receive their master's in the library system. So we have an employee that is already in the program and we'd just like to compliment him on that and move forward.
Any other discussion? Eric, can you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is any other new business? Reason we had so much is at the National League of City Conference in Washington DC, next week there will not be a council meeting. And the work, the work session and council meeting will resume on March 20th. Department reports, committees, boards, are there any?
Mr. President, I'm needing to clear up the record on a couple of past council actions. So we just wanted to make an announcement today, make sure there's no objections from the council for doing this. In 2007, the city accepted conveyance of some property at 1405 Central Avenue. And the person that offered to donate the property to the city never followed through and signed a quitclaim deed over to the city. So I would like to go back and make a marginal note in the minutes for that date, which is November 6 of 2007, that this action was never finalized by the person who donated the property. The other one was in 2011, and the property was at 2220 Hill Avenue. And it was the same situation. A person offered to donate the property and the city accepted it, but they never followed through with signing the deed over to the city.
So.
So who owns?
So we didn't get the property, either one of them?
We accepted the property, but then we didn't actually get the conveyance, assigned deed that we could have recorded at the courthouse. So I'd like to just clear up the records to go back and indicate that the action was never finalized by the other party.
I wonder, I wonder if we've been cutting grass on that property all these years and charging anybody?
That's what I was about to ask.
Both properties related to some, we had some nuisance proceedings at the time that they expressed interest in donating the property to the city.
Mr. Attorney, where are we on that? What is our next step? I mean, what, what do we do?
I don't know what the status of each of those is, where they went after that house they were building. We're seeing like any regular complaints.
Yeah, we might wanna check on that and send them a letter and tell them we got the deed ready, or we'll get a lien on the property, I guess.
I think one of them had the property sold for a length of taxes with the state. But they may not have an interest anymore.
Right.
We need to send somebody a bill, cutting the grass or whatever we've been doing.
I'm sending a letter to the governor. Not that my letters seem much good down there. But anyway, we got about 200 properties that we cut grass on that the state owns. And, you know, if we're gonna have to keep them up and maintain them, we need to go ahead and own them. And I'm gonna be asking for them to go ahead and deed those to us. I don't know if they will, but.
There was a move on from the Alabama League to try to get that done through the legislature. But I wish you luck.
Okay.
Just flopped around.
Expedited program where it can be done without all the rigmarole that you have to go through to acquire that property.
Oh, they expedited us to cut the grass, but then they expedited us to get the property.
That's what we want to eliminate.
See, the city has finally gotten interested in how much the internet has taken away from our, from our, our sales tax. It's over a trillion dollars.
Quite a bit.
In 10 years.
Quite a bit.
It's amazing how much business is done on the internet and no sales tax. And so therefore, even though we raised ours a penny seven, eight years ago, we, we get less income now than we did then. And we can't get the people in Washington interested in, in just putting on a, an equal amount, say, a sum amount, so that to make it easy. They're saying everybody has a different thing and they don't do anything about it. But it's gotten to be where it's a real problem for the cities all over the, that have sales tax all over the country.
What, what we've done in our, you know, in my committee, you know, I serve on the fair committee on, on the national level. And we're pushing the Congress to come up with a unified tax system because they were saying, you know, we can't do every jurisdiction, which they can't, 'cause you got three cents here, four cents, one cent. But all we asked them to do is to come up with a unified tax system across the country. And hopefully we can get something out of it. You know, if we don't get the one penny out of per dollar or whatever the case may be, 1%, it'd be better than what we're getting now, which is nothing. And so if it's a trillion dollars.
Since we have so much debt in, in the federal government right now, it would seem to me that if, if to make it easy on themselves, just put like a 7% tax on the internet and take the money and help pay off the debt, that'd be better than what we're doing now.
Well, that's true, but I don't want them to take the money and pay off their debt. We need to take some of that money, help pay off some of our debt too.
I would agree with that.
That's the problem.
But how long have we been trying to get them to do something about it?
Ever since.
Doesn't look like we gonna get anything done, so.
I agree.
That would be better than putting the tax on us.
We're gonna, we're gonna discuss that with them.
That's true. Okay, where are we?
Remarks, I guess.
Citizens?
Eh, department reports. We have no citizen request today. So I guess it's down to Ben, you wanna start?
Yeah, might as well. I'm sitting here with notes all over the place. Trickle down economics. Sherman was talking about that just a few minutes ago. He's talking about trickling down now to nothing, where 10, 15 years ago, we was trickling up the other side, you know? I'm gonna base all my notes that I wrote down on my trip to Washington DC next week, 'cause I'm gonna tell you, the last time I was up there, they were absolutely doing nothing.
Absolutely.
And I guarantee you, I'm gonna go up there and scream, just like you, Robert. My CED committee will be in that capsule in the Rayburn Building and everywhere, just raising cake. And we come back, we don't hear nothing.
Don't hear nothing?
So this time, I'm gonna formulate me a plan and just tell everybody how I really feel about it. But right now, I wanna welcome Richard Shattuck, he lives in my district. He's my constituent.
Yeah.
Good to see you, Richard. Absolutely.
You won't have any notes?
Sure. You can have my time.
We had a situation last week on Rattle Road. And I would just like to express my appreciation to Councilman Reed and the city and the police department and the special task force, what they did to resolve that situation. We truly appreciate it on behalf of the residents within my area.
Let me respond back, and I appreciate you saying that. But without the neighborhood watch up there, this would never have happened, period. The neighbors got together and they protected their neighborhood and they went with cooperation through the Gaston Police Department and other agencies, and it got done. And I'm glad it got done. And I commend you and your other neighbor. I was a little bit hesitant about on television saying, that's Richard and he had something to do with it. A lot of people don't wanna stand up there and admit it, you know?
I don't worry about things like this.
There you go. Hey, that's a University of Georgia man, for you.
Oh, Lord. Well, anyway, my remarks really, Bob, how in the world, we're talking about national politics now. But how in the world are you gonna hold their feet to the fire up there? You know, it just appears that nobody's saying anything. I don't care about that mess they got on TV and all that mess. That's the, I won't help down here. Our money. It's our money, we're sending it up there. They just fooling with it and not sending it back. That's the trickle-down part that I don't like. Anyway, that's all. I'll scream and holler next week.
Okay, Johnny.
I'd just like to remind everyone, we've got the music on Megan lined up. It's gonna start. The first concert will be May the 5th, be the first Saturday. And then on the third Saturday in May, we will have a, just got a bunch of musicians just coming out there playing. And that's gonna be the first and third Saturday all the way through the summer starting in May. And we're gonna end it in Labor Day. We're gonna have a big Labor Day celebration like we did four or five years ago down after we got the gazebo built. Just come out there and enjoy all the singing. It'll be free. I think everybody have a good time. That's all we got.
I'd just like to comment. I met our new chief of police yesterday for the first time. Very impressed with, with Johnny Crane. I know a lot of us had different choices that we would like to see. We had a lot of good candidates running for the part. But anyway, the point I'm trying to make is, let's get behind our new chief, see if we can have a real smooth transition and, and support him and back him. And I think he's gonna be a good man. I just wanna encourage everybody to be cooperative and let's get off to a good start.
I'm gonna cooperate. I have no problems with the individual. I just have a problem with the process. And I'm gonna continue to say that till the process change. We had an opportunity, yesterday, Mayor, we met with the consultant who's been working on the benefits issues. And so hopefully, within the next few weeks, to the city employees, we will have something ready to go. Is that correct, Mayor, that he?
I think so.
He's gonna have it by, so I, I didn't have a chance to talk with the council members. As soon as he get the package together, the finance committee will, will look at it. And then, of course, we'll try to get the council as a whole to get in on it. And hopefully, we can have something ready within the next 30 days dealing with the issues of employees and their benefits and the whole nine yards.
I'm glad you announced that, Robert, 'cause we're getting a lot of calls from employees.
Well.
So that's good.
You know, we, we wanted to give a timeframe, you know, we talked about a timeframe.
Sure.
We didn't wanna wait till the last minute before budget time to do all of that. So hopefully, we'll have something in the next couple of weeks.
This'll help.
To present to the council and, and vote them.
So I guess you're probably gonna go back at least eight years, correct? When I retired, at least eight years, you're gonna go back up?
If I remember correctly.
Seven and a half, isn't it, Robert?
Well, no, it says everybody who, eight years ago, will have to pay, I think it's about $1,000 a month, maybe, if I remember, something that, I'm sorry, but anyway.
As long as my wife's still working, it don't matter, as long as she's got it.
But I'm sure my wife will be interested since she retired within that period.
That'll last a month.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we go to Washington next week, this weekend, rather, with an agenda. And that agenda is to try to convince, you know, our representatives how important the programs that we are speaking about are to us. In particular, you know, the CDBG funding, which has a tendency to create, help create jobs and, and the Highway 7, extension of Interstate 759, that's been my big thing. And, you know, we don't just jump up and down on somebody's desk because we know that they, you know, we've done this last year. We do it with our local legislation, you know, we do it. But they don't, they don't see the importance of continuing or finishing 759 out to 431 and 278. It, it creates jobs for us. It creates economic opportunity when we have that. And if you don't believe it, you know, that, you would not probably want to establish a business out there in the Hood Avenue area, you know, and, and the immediate portion of West Megan Boulevard, East Megan Boulevard, I should say, because of the traffic there. I know I wouldn't. So we've got to do something to alleviate that traffic problem that we have there. And the only way we can do it is to have 759 completed on out. And I'm gonna be jumping up and down about that. And we have several other projects that we'll be just, just begging and pleading for them to be as considerate to us as we would like for them to be. We will, we will be doing that. We promise you that, that we will do that diligently. And the Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts, thank you all for the job you do. Of course, obviously, I haven't been involved with the Girl Scouts, but I have, I had a sister that.
Way off.
I had a sister that was involved with the Girl Scouts in Anniston, you know, for several years. And she enjoyed it tremendously. But when they changed the, the office, the district office from Anniston to Birmingham, she saw that, that wouldn't work for her. But the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts are great organizations. And I, I suggest that we all support those organizations because they are good. I was a Boy Scout and I really enjoyed it. I should still be one, but we, we will support those organizations. Thank you. And I heard, I heard, you know, the, the results of, of the incident that we had, Ben, in your district, came about because of the attentiveness of a neighborhood, neighborhood watch, where people were not, where people came forward, you know, and made known situations that were going on in their neighborhood and in their community. We're all challenged to do the same thing. When there are things going on in your neighborhood and your community, if you're not organizing to a neighborhood watch, pick up the phone and, and call our police department, any department that's concerned. If it's Public Works, pick up the phone and call them because they don't know these things sometimes unless they get public information. So I, I want to thank that, that community for being forward and hope that we'll all do that in all of our districts and all, all over the city of Gaston. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Piggyback on that, we started our Save Our Neighborhood program about five or six years ago. And it's like, you know, we do citations when things need to be cleaned up around certain dwellings, condemning houses. And, and we've got a neighborhood coordinator. They have neighborhood watch meetings in different areas. And it's been really helpful since Chief Harbin there. And I wanna get into that a little bit too, about the special response team. I'm not sure of all the names. Chief wants to comment immediately, I'll let him in just a second. But they cleaned up some problems we had at Morana Park. They work undercover. It's about five or six younger guys. They've been up on Hines Road. They've been over at Park in East Gaston. I think they were involved in several areas. And what we want on the neighborhood watch group, we, we don't want you to just be the eyes and ears. We get a lot of tips. You can call my office. You don't have to tell your name. Give us the address. If there's a lot of activity going on, you think something's funny going on or anything like that, or tag numbers in certain areas. We have people out in undercover cars in addition to the regular beat cars that we have. But we email stuff straight to the chief or straight to the drug task force. And many, many times, you'll see that address come up in the news after a couple of weeks, might be a couple of months. Sometimes they're working up the ladder to get bigger and bigger. But that's, that's how it works. You don't have to tell your name. We don't wanna know your name. We just wanna know where there's a problem. And then somebody will be checking it out. And also, Chief, you've been there, what, about four and a half months? Done a great job. We appreciate what you've done. The guns that were stolen out of the cars, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let you comment about that if you'd like to. Sometime, we don't get much press, but you've been doing a lot of good work since you've been in there. And I appreciate that. The council does too. Go ahead and tell them what you wanna talk about.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to appreciate, to recognize the council for, and appreciation for all the support that I've been given from the council. And the information that we receive from, from the communities is very important for us. That's, that's the purpose of our special, our special projects team that we have put together, to go out and work with neighborhood watch, recognize problems that come up in the community and follow up on the information they get. As the mayor said, that we, they've been assigned several major projects during the last year or so. And they've been highly successful working with, with citizens of the community. That's what they're there for. Sergeant Kinner is the head of that unit. You contact Sergeant Kinner and I guarantee you, we'll, if it's whatever resource it takes to solve that problem, whether it be working with the task force or maybe, usually, we try to do our own undercover stuff on that. But like I said, we've been highly successful. And that's kind of where we are with them without public support. And the information that we get, we'd probably have to work a whole lot harder. So they're out there for you, please use them. Be happy to, any, any calls, any, doesn't make any difference if you think it may be something or may not be something, but call and report it and our guys will check it out. We have a very active team and they've done an excellent job for us. Thank you.
I understand, excuse me if you're interrupting, but I would like to make a comment. I understand that the transition is probably gonna take place sometime this weekend and this and this may be Chief Harbin's last time, so I just want to give him a hand. What a great job you've done.
Yeah, I was going to finish up by saying that when we have the neighborhood watch meetings, you can call my office and get the coordinator's name. They'll set it up. And the more we can have in smaller areas, the better it is, you know. I think I've said this before, I was over in one section that's been real successful. One afternoon, a lot of times, I'll ride around and look at things that we get calls on, on the weekends. And I have tinted windows on my vehicle, and we're riding around, this guy pulls up, and it's almost dark, and rolled the window down, wanted to know if he could help me. And of course, he saw who I was, and he was part of the watch. He said he'd had three or four calls about an SUV with tinted windows riding around the neighborhood really slow, which is a good thing. About 30 minutes later, a few blocks over, I had another guy come up. And that's the kind of stuff we need. You don't, I'm not saying go out and pull the car over like they did, but, you know, get the tag numbers, get the addresses, and we can do something with it. We really tried to have all the latest equipment that our officers need, and we've expanded. We've got about 98, I think now. We've had around 80 when we got in office. And we want to keep doing whatever the equipment they need, whatever it is. And, you know, we've got a new chief coming in. That's already happened, so we'll work with him the same way too as we have with anybody else that's been in there since we've been in office. So thank you.
Okay, let me remind you again that next week, we will not meet, we'll meet again on March 20th, and that's because most of us are going to the National League of Cities in Washington. I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
It's a move. Second.
This meeting is adjourned.